All right, we've got six o'clock. Let's get started. Christina, will you do the roll, please?
Yes, Fish, Johnson, Jorgensen, Cole, Lawrence, Steen, Mayor Buck.
Present. We do have a quorum even though we have a couple missing tonight. Um, we're looking at the agenda. Uh, any additions or corrections? Look for a motion to approve. Motion second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. We've got the minutes from the February first and Feb- February fifth meetings. Any additions or corrections there? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Excuse me, we need a motion? Motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Thank you. Actually, the links are playing, you know. Anyway, um, claims on pages twelve through fourteen. Motion second to approve the claims. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Pose same sign. And motion carries. We have the consent calendar. We have, um, the normal things plus a wage adjustment for Andrew. Motion second to approve. The consent calendar. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, visitors and timed items. This is an opportunity for anybody that would like to address the council on any particular issue, whether it's on the agenda or not on the agenda. Um, if it's gonna be on the agenda, you might wanna wait, but if you can come and talk anytime. Seeing none, we'll move on. Public hearing. We have the first reading of ordinance, um, six ninety-six. Uh, the rezone on Chestnut Ridge.
Correct. If you look on page seventeen, uh, it shows the tracks to be rezoned. Track one A would be rezoned to R two medium density residential. Track two would be R three, which is high density residential, and then track one, or track three would be NRC. This is consistent with the preliminary plans that were submitted, uh, a while ago.
Is NRC because it's wetlands or something?
Yep.
Okay. I'll look for a motion.
Uh, recommendation from P and Z is to pass.
Motion second to approve the first reading of six ninety-six. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Pose same sign. And motion carries. We also have the first reading of ordinance six ninety-seven. Brian?
This is rezoning, uh, Sunrise Park to institutional. Just another city park that we're trying to get all under the same zoning code.
Motion second to approve the first reading of ordinance three six ninety-seven. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Pose same sign. And motion carries. We don't have any old business to cover. Uh, standing committee reports will move to the golf course. Andrew?
Um, yep, I just have kind of our, um, typical season review from the twenty twenty-three, um, year. Um, so I'll just run through this stuff real quick. Stop me if you have any questions or, uh, let me know at the end. Um, another record year for rounds, twenty-nine thousand nine forty-five, so just under that thirty thousand mark. Um, broke the record we set in twenty twenty-one of twenty-seven thousand. Um, which is pretty good. We had a late spring. We didn't open till April twelfth, um, this past year. Uh, but we went all the way till December seventh, so ended up with two hundred four playable days, which is probably a little below, um, what I'd consider really good for playable days, but so really good rounds with that. Um, three fifths of those happened in June, July, and August, so those are kind of the meat of the year, peak season, um, if you will. And we only had two, two rainout days in that peak season, June, July, and August, so that's really good. Um, so we had really good weather. Um, then kind of a breakdown of who's playing those rounds, um, fifty-four percent are paying a green fee, which is huge. Um, we've got a really good balance right now between green fees, season pass holders, um, and outside events. Um, it's really working out well for us where we're at. Um, few event highlights from this year. We did thirty-three outside, um, kinda corporate or fundraiser events, and the majority of those are June, July, and August. So kinda almost for that peak season, we're doing one every three days, so that it, it is a lot, um, in those three months. We do six tournaments just ourselves, just kinda that we run. We're actually adding a seventh for twenty twenty-four. So we do one a month, uh, April through September, and now it'll be April through October. Um, about three years ago, um, started a new league. It's grown. Uh, the first year we had fifteen to twenty playing each week. Now we're fifty to sixty. Uh, it's been a really successful league. Um, really proud of that, and I expect that to keep growing. Um, we do couples nights in that June, July, and August one each month. We do a bingo night, a trivia night, and then a steak and wine dinner night. Um, those are really well attended again this year. Um, and then, uh, we host all the high school stuff. We had six of their regular meets this year. We were lucky. Uh, we ho- hosted the double A boys state tournament this year, which was a big deal. We had huge crowds for that. A lot of people came. Um, it was really fun to host that. Uh, then we hosted SDGA championship, uh, with the senior women's and the senior, uh, mid-am for the women. Um, so anytime, yeah, any, either the high school or the South Dakota, uh, Golf Association chooses you to host an event, that's a big honor. Speaks a lot about the golf course, and we got both of them to have their, uh, bring big events to Brandon here in, in twenty twenty-three. Um, and then we hosted the Border Battle Laverne. We've been doing that for ten years. That's a really cool big event. The first year, I've been a part of all of them. The first year it was eight on eight, and this last year we had forty people on each team. So that event's grown. It's really fun. Kind of if you're familiar with the Ryder Cup and the PGA Tour, it's kinda like that. It's a good time. Uh, Brandon won this year. We're, of ten of them, Brandon's six and four, so we've got the upper hand right now.
And do you have, for the state tournaments, are you, uh, in twenty twenty-four?
Yep, so we're, we're actually hosting the state, uh, two-woman, the state senior two-woman and the state mid-am two-woman. So that's a really big event. They'll probably have three hundred plus golfers in that event, and that's two days. That's the first or second weekend in June. It's the seventh and eighth, I believe, of June. So, yeah, we're excited to host that one. Um, speaks good things about the golf course and what we've been doing over the past few years at SDGA's, bringing events to Brandon. Um, and then on top of the stuff I have on there, we hosted a South Dakota Golf Association Junior Tour every year. That brings two hundred plus kids to town for that. It's their biggest, uh, junior tour event. They do a junior tour all summer. It courses all over. So like the city courses in Sioux Falls and the Great Life Courses don't host those. They have their own junior tours. So we're probably the biggest course that hosts those, so we get a big turnout for that. Uh, and then we do our own junior golf program, um, in June through the summer rec. Uh, we had about fifty kids participate in that, which is really good. When I started doing that in twenty fifteen, we had like fifteen kids, so that's grown. That's been really good. Um, then on the next page, just a bunch of numbers for the year. Um, I'll try and run through some quick so I don't bore you with those. But, uh, revenue was great this year. Um, one point sig- little over one point six million. That's sixty-seven percent growth over the last five years. So that's really, really good. Um, as far as our O and M, which is basically our, our, our operating, um, expenses versus revenues, uh, we're in the black, four hundred fifty-nine thousand, almost four hundred and sixty thousand, which is awesome. And what that means is that, uh, so we budgeted one point, a little over one point one million for a transfer with the wall project, and the transfer ended up only being six hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So that's about, that four fifty-nine basically goes back into the general fund. The money that would've come out of the general fund helps, uh, keep that money in the general fund. Um, so that, that's really good. I'm really proud of that, um, that number. Um, the biggest revenue growth's been in the pro shop. Uh, that's gone up a hundred and six percent over the last five years. Um, that next number's just the pro shop and grounds O and M, so that, that's been pretty strong. It was really strong this year. Um, the biggest source has been the green fees and cart fees. Um, the green fees this year were fi- over five hundred thousand. We budgeted, our forecast budget was two hundred and seventy-five thousand. So we exceeded that, um, by about two hundred and thirty thousand. In carts, we exceeded by about a hundred and fifteen thousand. So really, really good. People are coming out and playing. Um, we're getting those, those people that are paying green fees and paying per round to come out and play, which hasn't always been the case. Um, season pass revenue's been strong, gives us a good balance in different types of players. Uh, merchandise is getting better. The supply chain stuff's kind of starting to get better. It's getting a little bit easier, um, to get stuff in. Um, and then, and then probably the, the biggest leap this year was our lounge, um, revenue and lounge O and M. Uh, went up from thirty-six thousand O and M last year to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, so that's really good in there. Um, this is our first year. We didn't do a full menu food. We, we really limited the food. Helped a ton on labor, helped a ton on waste. It really let our employees in there focus on getting drinks out to people and not worrying about cooking burgers and, and chicken strips and stuff constantly. It was hard to really staff it correctly. We'd overstaff it, and then no one would show up. We'd have one person working and thirty, forty people would wanna eat in an hour. So I think it went really well for the first year. We'll, we'll keep monitoring that and see where we're at, but I'm really happy with that this year. Um, community rooms just kinda stayed pretty steady. Um, kind of is what it is at this point. There's, when that building was built, I think there was two places to hold a recep- one reception and brand in the VFW, or one, the VFW and that. Um, so now obviously we've got the, the holiday end space, which we've learned about the last couple weeks and how that came about. And then all, there's barns, wineries, there's all kinds of places now. So there's a lot of competition. We keep chopping away, but so it is six hundred and sixteen dollars of the O and M, so it broke even, so can't complain about that. Um, it's not, didn't lose money this year. Um, grounds expenditures, as you can imagine, just kind of steadily increasing year over year. I think we've done a good job keeping up with our pricing, just kinda stay ahead of that and help ourselves out. Um, clubhouse expenditures, same thing, same thing. Buildings getting older, needs some maintenance. Um, kind of climate, and hopefully, hopefully we'll get to a spot where we've kind of updated everything, uh, next few years, and, and that number will, uh, kinda settle. Um, and then all our capital improvements the last five years, uh, we've done about three million dollars over the last five years, um, which is awesome. It's made a huge impact. About one point seven five million was that retaining wall, and then we're still hopefully getting about seven hundred thousand from FEMA. Something like that, maybe someday, hopefully. So, so a lot, a lot of those, um, those expenditures will be covered by FEMA, and then, and then we had the wall, which we were using fund balance for. So those are all listed there. Um, just a couple observations that I've seen, why things have ticked up, why we're doing better. Um, COVID obviously helped a ton. It got a lot of people into the game or back into the game. Then I remember saying in twenty twenty, we were, some of you were on council, and we were looking at management company going a different way after. That was my first year um, as a golf course manager, and, and I remember saying it was our, it was our job now to keep the people that have showed up, and I think we've done a really good job. I'm really appreciative. I got a chance to kinda, kinda put my vision on the golf course and, and help get it to where it is today. Um, I can't take all the credit. I think the, the improvements are a big reason, um, that bring people out. And then our population growth is, it's not gonna get any smaller, especially around out there in the golf course, so we're, we're moving in new golfers every day. Um, yeah, that's about as quick as I can go, so if you guys have any questions, let me know. Uh, otherwise, I think, uh, this twenty twenty-four season will be just as good, hopefully.
So Andrew, you've done a terrific job. Um, when, when they come out for those tournaments, so the food, is that typically catered?
Yeah, so I would say seventy-five percent of them do Tony's. So we have a menu through Tony's. Um, we get, uh, two, three bucks, uh, per person from Tony's when they cater. So Tony's has their prices, and we have Brandon Golf Course catering prices, so we, they go through us. We order it, and Tony's comes out. And then they can bring in any caterer they want. We just charge five dollars a person then if they bring in their own caterer.
But we get the sales tax on all that.
Correct.
And then...
And I did make a note on our, on our total, our total sales tax that we took in was about thirty-two thousand this year. And that's just what we took in. Um, I like to say the golf course, especially those six, five, six really busy months are one of the main reasons the roads do come east from Sioux Falls. We get a lot of people from Sioux Falls to town, and hopefully they're eating at our restaurants, getting gas here, contributing a little bit.
And then, um, if they have a drink in the bar, we're getting that.
Yep, and that's that third penny as well.
Yeah, we're getting that third penny, so I mean, that's just another positive too, so thanks.
Uh, great job, by the way.
Thank you.
Awesome. This is really cool. Um, are you seeing anything in the future as far as like capital improvements that, that we're gonna need to be making here?
Yeah, Kelly, the superintendent, I were just talking today. We're getting our list ready. We'll be having those meetings here in a couple months. We've, we've got some stuff on there that's been on there the last three, four years and some new things to add on, so. Nothing, uh, too disruptive. The last three, four years, we've been doing a lot as far as disrupting the golf course and stuff. That's another reason this year was so big. It's the first year we've had the full golf course put back together since the twenty nineteen flood. Um, so, yeah, we'll see where it, where it goes in the future.
Uh, I would echo these two in saying great job this year, and, and, uh, uh, the wage adjustment was definitely earned. I saw that was based on a forty-hour work week, so we'll try.
I, I get, I've gotten better the last couple of years. It gets closer and closer to averaging forty hours a week.
Uh, just a couple of questions. What are some of the things that fall into that other category, that two percent in the pie chart?
So that'd be like employee rounds, high school golf rounds. So anytime like the high school team plays nine holes for practice, counts as a round. So they're just, both of those aren't generating revenue, so I kinda just threw them in a different bucket.
Perfect, so, perfect. And, and what, last question is just, uh, golf carts. You know, you've said in the past that our fleet of golf carts is aging. Do we have a plan to replace?
So this is, w- we lease them. This is a year, year five of the lease. So budget time this year, we'll, we'll put in the budget to lease a new fleet next year. Um, I'll tell you right now, our payment on the ones we have now is really, really, really good. It won't be anywhere near that. Um, but the cart revenue's been really strong, and when, the nice thing is when you get new carts, you can, you can charge more. We're at twenty-two dollars a round, and courses that have gotten new carts, um, or per rider, we're at twenty-two. Courses around us that have gotten new carts in the last year or two are at twenty-five. So we'll be able to add two or three dollars to what we're charging when we get new ones, so, and that makes up for it.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you, guys.
Terrific. Good job. Keep up the good work. Uh, we've got some seasonal hires on page fifty.
I'll have to recuse myself from this one, Mayor, 'cause I recognize one of the names on the list.
I'll look for a motion. Motion second to approve the seasonal hires. Can we do that with three? All in favor? Pose? Done. Okay, Parks and Rec. Parks reports on page fifty-one. Not all that much going on at this point, I guess. So we'll move to public safety. We've got the, uh, camera regulations, page fifty-two to fif- sixty-four. Ashley, give your name and address.
My name's Carmen Dean, and I reside at four twenty-one South Fifth Avenue, and I also have my husband with me, um, Russell. And, um, basically what I've submitted is we have a neighbor that's behind us, directly behind us, um, who has posed some issues since twenty twenty for us, well, even prior to that. And in twenty twenty, because I was working from home, I was out in the backyard, and, um, kinda got harassed about us spraying our weeds in our backyard, even though there's no ordinance or state law that says you can't spray weeds. Anyways, we ended up tearing out a chain link fence that was in the, around this house, and in doing so, we also found out, um, where our property line actually was. So when we put in our six-foot privacy fence, a cedar fence, um, which we did on our own to save money, and we put it up to the property line, which we were told we could do, which irritated our backyard neighbor. So this fence has been up for a couple of years. Um, last May, we came home from a walk with our dogs. We have two little Shih Tzu's, so they're not very big dogs. They do like to bark at squirrels, um, and rabbits and stuff, so they do get noisy once in a while. But anyways, we came home, and here is a security camera attached to his garden shed, which is at the most three to four feet from our privacy fence, and it is pointed, it is motion detected, sound detection, it has infrared night vision from what we were told when we had called, um, the police department to come over. And so basically what we have figured out is, um, we put on a small deck on the back of our house, um, that goes out to a patio, which we just poured this last winter, um, 'cause we're starting to fix up our backyard now. And what I figured out at two o'clock in the morning in February, when I let one of the dogs out, is the light on that camera came on as soon as the dog reached the end of the deck to go down the steps, which is ten feet from our back, from our back door. So what we've kinda figured out is this camera, um, can see everything we're doing and probably three quarters of our yard. Um, so we are, um, we have also approached him about it. Um, one of the things that happened was we came back one time, and he was pushing dirt up against the cedar boards. And we said, you can't do that. You're gonna rot the boards, plus the fence is not right on the property line. It sits on the inside. And his wife was very nice, and she said, we'll move the dirt, and they did move the dirt, but far as anything else, there's no discussing with him or anything. So, um, I did some more loo- looking today, and that's what I, um, provide you with, with South Dakota statutes, 'cause there is one about, it's twenty-two, twenty-one dash one, about eavesdriv- eavesdropping, and it talks about surveillance in a private place, which I consider, I mean, we put up a privacy fence. We expect some privacy back there. Um, and we are going to be having small children here in the near future, 'cause we are, um, expecting a grandchild. So I've come, we're coming before the city commission and asking for some assistance with this, or at least developing an ordinance, because we do not wanna see this happen to other people. We're not against security cameras. They're a great thing, especially for those who are porch pirates or vandalized. Um, I mean, we've, we've been up during the night, and we've seen people trying to get in vehicles. Our vehicle was one they tried to get into, and my husband went out and approached them that night, and they took off. Um, and the police were on that street to that night as well. So we're not against them. We know they're in stores and everything, but when they're in a back, in your backyard like that and focusing mainly on your backyard, your, you know, your neighbor's got it, and it's focusing mainly on your backyard, um, we're just trying to figure out something we can do, um, that's not gonna cause us a huge financial burden. I mean, we've t- been told we could possibly take them into court, but to hire an attorney, that's expensive, and then there's no guarantee when we come out of there what could happen. So, um, basically, like I said, I'm, we're coming in front of the commission to ask for some assistance with this, whether it be a letter or some way to tell him he has to move that camera, so it's not in our backyard or a city ordinance that will prohibit this, 'cause we, uh, like I said, we don't wanna see this happen to anybody else.
Okay, Carmen, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Lisa, you've done a little bit of research on this?
Um, yeah, and I'm not sure what you provided, but I had looked at that invasion of privacy statute that is a South Dakota law, and I don't think it meets that definition. You could certainly reach the state's attorneys and ask them, but, um, I don't think it meets the definition, uh, necessarily of what a private, of a public nuisance is for the city. Um, you do have ability to bring a private nuisance action in small claims court or circuit court. That I think it would potentially meet. There are some states that have statutes that, uh, allow a private right of action for unwarranted video imaging on residential properties. Those are state statutes. So that would allow you through a state statute to bring a private, um, cause of action for that type of, uh, remedy. Um, going to the legislature and asking them for a state statute would be something you could do, but it's not something that I think, uh, is a public nuisance necessarily that the city would want to get involved in in terms of prosecuting. We have a lot of neighbor versus neighbor issues. Um, and I think this is one of those that there's a remedy already as a private nuisance in the court of law or adopting a state statute, like New York and some other states have. But all, uh, city ordinance would do would put into effect an ordinance violation that we, the city, would need to prosecute and have a judge agree with us, and then it'd just be a city fine, um, and possibly removal. But, um, again, that would be the city prosecuting it. And technically, it could be grandfathered in right now.
We don't currently have any ordinance.
We do not have an ordinance in place that would specifically address this.
Okay, so this thing we were just handed, this, this, uh, twenty-two dash twenty-one dash one, eavesdropping privacy misdemeanor?
Yeah, so I had looked at that, um, and that's a state statute that, uh, it's a class one misdemeanor, so that would mean it would be prosecuted by the state's attorney's office in the event that the Manhattan County State's Attorney's Office would deem it to be a, an evasion of privacy claim.
So would that be a possibility for Deans to, uh, talk to the state's attorney?
Um, they could certainly meet with the state's attorney. I don't know that the state's attorney would find the elements met. I don't find them met. Um, it wasn't installed. Um, I mean, I, I would say you could certainly go visit with the state's attorney's office and see if they would prosecute it under that, but I don't make the decision for them. They didn't wanna prosecute under, um, the, there was something else I think you had said you looked at.
Back in May, um, when we had called the police department, there was a report filed with the state's attorney, and they decided not to proceed because we did not have a minor child residing in our house. Because if we had a minor child in our, our house, it would've been a felony. And so they will not proceed against it, 'cause it's a misdemeanor, so that's kinda what we've heard.
And there may be some statute that relates to that in terms of children?
And I know this is a, more of a, you know, neighbor, neighborly thing, but what's been the communication with the, with your neighbor? Obviously, you haven't gotten anywhere. That's why you're here today. Is that correct? Yeah.
And so Lisa, the, the light that comes on, that doesn't cause any type of public nuisance or, or, I don't wanna say trespassing, but, you know, that, that would be the same as them putting up a, a spotlight on that shed and trying to get into their backyard at two AM.
Yeah, so, you know, a public nuisance is something that annoys, injures, or endanes the comfort or health or safety of others. So I don't know that a spotlight or a camera meets that definition in terms of health or safety. I mean, it, it's annoying, but does it impair the health or safety? Um, the court would have to find that for a public nuisance. Um, a public nuisance can also be something that offends decency. A court would have to find this offends decency in terms of if you want me to prosecute a public nuisance. And I don't know if, if the court would find the element of offending decency to be met. Um, if you direct me to do so, I can certainly file a public nuisance action and go down to court. I, I don't know that the court would find that, and that's where, to me, what makes sense is a private nuisance, because a private nuisance, the element, say, it's an invasion of another's interest in the private use and enjoyment of land, and that's, I think, what we have here. Um, that's a private cause of action that can be filed in small claims court or circuit court. It's not that hard to file a small claims action. It's pretty inexpensive. Um, and I think that's something that it meets the definition of. And then, like I said, the private right of action for unwarranted video imaging that other states have enacted by statutes of the legislature, that's something that could be looked at, but I think what best meets the definition is the private nuisance. And that would be a spotlight, for example, too, or a camera.
And so what could the damages be for a private nuisance? That's not a, that's not like a misdemeanor. That would be more like a fine?
Well, it's a private lawsuit, and the court would have the ability to say, take it down.
So I do believe they could install, let's call it a trellis, to block the view of this camera. What would then happen if the neighbors would then lift the camera above the trellis? Like, would, this, this could just go to the sky, I mean? Like, this, this could just go to the sky, I mean-
Or mounted on a tree, or, you know, yeah. So that's where I think the private, um, private nuisance definition best meets what's going on.
So just being the devil's advocate here, so if the, if the neighbor with the camera wanted to just set up a ladder and watch over the fence, that'd be acceptable? I mean, based on our ordinances, we put it that way.
Well, we, we have a public nuisance ordinance, and the definition of a public nuisance is that um annoying the health and safety. Well, you know, what, and I certainly understand there's an emotional toll that can be withstood in terms of this, or offending decency, um, that's for the court to decide if it offends decency or not, and I think that might be a little more difficult to reach under these circumstances. If you direct me to prosecute a public nuisance, I can do that, I don't know what the court would do with it.
Otherwise, you're saying they could take this to small claims court?
I, yes. Or to circuit court.
Or to circuit court.
And you don't need an attorney for either of those. Is it easier? Sure, but um you don't need an attorney.
Or they could install a trellis, grow some vines, block the view.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I saw that they've already planted trees, right? It's just, best time to plant a tree was yesterday, right? But, yeah.
Okay. I think maybe we've just discussed about as much as we can, any other final thoughts or questions? It's unfortunate, these things happen, but it's unfortunate. Okay, thanks for coming in, guys, good luck. All right, we'll uh move on. Um, we have a intern for the police department on page sixty-five. I'll look for a motion.
Yeah, I'd move to approve.
Unpaid intern. Okay. Motion second to approve the unpaid intern. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Yeah, I just had a really quick question, but the chief stepped out, I'll ask him later, so, just a, just an informational question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Um, we've got the uh Axon contract. Brian?
Yep, we're adding two additional cameras in storage, uh since we're increasing the size of the fleet due to supply chain issues. Um, so we adopted or approved the contract with Axon earlier this year, um, the two extra cameras in storage will add an additional forty-one hundred, forty-two hundred bucks to the contract for twenty, for uh the next four years.
Okay. I'll look for a motion.
Second.
Motion second to approve, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. And we've got the uh fire department report, uh forty-two calls in January. They just keep on getting the job done. Uh, administration, resolution ten dash twenty-four.
Uh, this is, this is pertaining to bid district number one, which was created back in two thousand and five for the construction of the conference center at the Holiday Inn Express. The intent of the bid district was to help defray the cost for the construction of the community center, or conference center, that debt we've paid off on or about March first of this year, so we need to abolish the bid district. The first step of that is, is a resolution of intent, um, which is what resolution ten twenty-four is, and then the process, there's a public hearing, first reading of ordinance, second reading of an ordinance, publication, and then obviously the ordinance becomes effective twenty days later, so we'd be looking at mid-May by the time the district is abolished.
Okay, any questions?
I'd move to approve the resolution.
At second.
Motion second to approve, any further discussion?
I do have a question for you, Brian, uh, you know, looking on the fund balances, you know, later on in the report, there's a, there's a line item for TIF two conference with available fund in there, what will happen to that fund balance?
TIF two fund, fund balance will, um, if there's anything left in there, which I don't, um, we'll go back to the county, and the county dis- distributes it between the appropriate taxation, so county, city, and school. Um, typically, I could, like, I'll notify them right away when the TIF gets dissolved, so that'll be on that, on the next meeting, and then uh the county will distribute that before I receive any more funds, uh, on, in the TIF. As far as the bid, the bid, any funds that are left in the bid, the council has the authority, I think, to do whatever, wherever.
Transfer it wherever you want.
Wherever you want.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes. Uh, there won't be much.
Any other questions? I'll look for a mo-, uh, for a, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. The Ristie Barn uh structural assessment proposal, eighty-two to eighty-nine.
There is a barn that uh the Historical Society uh believes was built some, sometime around nineteen-ten, nineteen-twenty, on the Ristie Metz property that the Van Baskirk Companies recently purchased, we've got a, a preliminary plan coming up later in the meeting about it. There's been some discussion among some uh interested parties about saving the barn, so a week ago, we met with Van Baskirk Companies, GF and P, uh Historical Society in the city, to at least talk about the barn. Um, in my mind, the first thing that we should take a look at is the barn structurally sound, is it sav- is it salvageable, you know, what will it take to, I don't want to say bring it up to code, because I'm not sure what the code would be on the nineteen-fifteen barn. Um, so I contacted ISG, they put together a proposal that has two phases in it, first phase would be a structural analysis, where they go in and take a look at the barn structurally, make some recommendations, whether it's, it's structurally sound, and what it needs to be brought up to, uh, if you look at the pictures, you can see some daylight through the walls. Um, that's five thousand dollars uh I offered, we have, we have the third penny sales tax fund, which architectural fees are an appropriate um expenditure out of that fund, so I volunteered that the city would upfront that four, five thousand dollars uh to look at the structure, structure of the barn. The next phase would be if it's structurally sound, and people are still interested in it, to, ISG would come in and sit down with the same stakeholders, and try to determine a, an appropriate use for the barn, whether that's storage, whether it's educational center, uh, whatever. Um, so the first step, at least in my mind, was to do a structural analysis, and the recommendation from that stakeholder group is to, is to proceed with that.
Okay. So my quick question would just, just to clarify, that doesn't commit us to, doesn't commit the city to anything, it's just we're gonna, we're gonna see if this thing is sound, and then we can get back together with all the parties to see how we want to move forward.
Correct, correct. Once, once we get the structural analysis back, and assuming it comes back that it's sound, uh, we'll need to sit down with the stakeholders, and there's a number of questions that need to be answered. A, ownership, you know, what, which entity is going to own it? Is it Historical Society, the city, GF and P, or is there a third entity that could be created to own it? Um, and then what future uses of the barn, and what improvements would have to be made to it in order to accommodate those uses? So that's, that's down the road.
Probably not big enough for city hall.
City administrator's office.
There you go. Okay, we've got the uh, we'll look for a motion.
My second.
A motion in a second to um approve the proposal from ISG. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. And video lottery discussion, Brian?
I'm turning the floor over to Christine, because it's-
Oh gee, thanks.
The more we dig into it, the more confusing it becomes.
Yeah, uh, video lottery from the state contacted me, I don't know, a few weeks ago, it's kind of what started the whole discussion. Um, he wanted to know if we had any restrictions in our ordinances on video lottery. Um, I said, I don't know, I'll look. So ordinance are chapter six-nine, uh, six-nine-one is, we, we do limit the number of video lottery establishments um to seven, so we can only limit malt beverage and wine, we can't limit if they're in a liquor. So if it's an on-sale liquor, we can't limit that. So there's a list on page ninety-five, and I put on there if it's a liquor, or RW is wine, RB is malt beverage. Um, so there, we have currently eight of them, our current ordinance allows seven, so some of them are, you know, obviously grandfathered in, some of them are fairly, um, been there a while. Um, I would say some have probably been there before we even put this ordinance in place in oh-nine. So there's a, and there's a couple of different questions. Um, so question number one is, do you want to change the number of conditional use permits? This ordinance was put back in two thousand and nine, our population at that time was around eight thousand. Um, we're currently eighty-two hundred, probably, we're currently at a little over eleven thousand. Um, I have had two inquiries for more video lottery machines, and they would be for a wine or malt beverage license. Um, so currently, right now, I've said currently we do not have any available, um, so they would not be able to open anymore in Brandon. Um, and then the other thing is currently, right now, we do not charge for video lottery machines, so state statute allows us, allows cities to charge fifty dollars per machine, and we do not charge that. Um, there's another page in here, page ninety-four, that shows all the cities, I think they're just mostly first-class cities, that do charge that. Um, Brandon and here are the only ones that do not charge it. So that would be question number two, do we want to start charging that? We currently have, oh. My estimate would be around seven thousand in revenue currently, most estab-, you can have up to ten machines in an establishment, most of them have those ten, so if you take the ten times, and we can charge for the liquor ones, too. So we have fourteen establishments with video lottery in it, that'd be a hundred and forty machines, take that times fifty, you get about seven thousand in revenue. So question one, maybe is, maybe you want to start with, do we want to start charging fifty dollars per machine?
Do you want us to talk, to do this tonight, or do you want to? No, okay.
Just direction, so we can write an ordinance, because an ordinance would have to be put in place.
Yeah. I can't see any reason why we wouldn't want to, so write it up, and we'll decide.
Okay, it's pretty simple, we just collect it, and we do the renewal of the alcohol license, so it's not really much more. And then the second question would be, do you want to change the number of conditional use permits for video lottery?
I, I think, would it be easier for city staff if we didn't set a number? You know, you said in two thousand and nine, it was set at seven, would it be easier for, for you guys to do something along the lines of every thousand residents that we have in the city, we increase it by one? So when we hit twelve thousand, then you can have twelve establishments, thirteen, et cetera, would that be more conducive for you guys?
Christine and I talked today, yeah, we, we would, not a hard and fast number, we talked about possibly utilizing the same formula for alcohol licenses, which is the first two for twenty-five hundred, and then one license for every fifteen hundred after that. It's already in place, we could go out and steal some other cities, too, but yeah, some, just some formula that would, that would change.
If we did it that way, how, where would we get?
So if you did the number of on-sale, we currently are allowed ten on-sale liquor licenses.
So then, there would be enough, there would be three more.
But we already have.
We have eight, so there would actually be two more available, but.
I think you have to have something, otherwise you could end up with thirty.
Right.
But you have something.
What's the downside of having thirty?
It's a lot of video lottery machines.
It is, but I mean, you've got twenty, or ten, or whatever, I mean, there's still plenty of places to go.
Yeah, I mean, the, the downside, now you're getting into, you know, gaming and morals and, and where people spend their money.
So we can sin, we just can't sin that bad.
Yes, you know, it's just like all the other sin taxes that are out there, you know, if theoretically, if somebody goes and blows half their paycheck on video lottery, which we don't receive any revenue on, they're not going to spend it buying groceries, which we get sales.
So they gotta go down the street to do it, yeah.
Or the idea that um they're often hand-in-hand with liquor licenses, so when you have increased concerns about safety, people drinking, playing video lottery, and leaving, I mean, there are those concerns of why cities don't have thirty, fifty different establishments.
That could be part of the reason why they limited it back in two thousand and nine, you can have an unlimited amount of malt beverage licenses and wine licenses, and so it, you can have as many as you want in the town, and so, you know, and video lottery goes along with those licenses, so I don't know if that's why they limited that back in oh-nine or not.
And, and trying to dig through the minutes from oh-nine.
We spent a lot of time on this.
There was a conversation, I think this was adopted in spring, April, I think in, in March, there were, the council adopted a resolution regulating adult entertainment venues, so I think that might have kind of contributed to the, the discussion at the time, I don't know, but I think, if I remember right, oh-nine was a, a big year for adult entertainment restrictions.
It was zoning, yeah, it was zoning restrictions of where it took place, so there were a lot of discussions about all of this at that time.
I, I, I mean, I don't want us to have a gazillion of them, but our population has increased, so I guess I would be comfortable with whatever formula makes sense and is easy to, I mean, makes sense to mirror the other one.
I mean, that's, that's kind of what we talked about, was the one for alco-, on-sale alcohol licenses is already in place, it's been in place, it's, it's developed by the state, it's pretty recognized, so that would be the easiest one, too.
That's nice to have that consistent, I mean, it's, it's not consistent along establishments, but it's a consistent number for you guys to maintain.
All right, let's write it up.
Okay.
Next is uh-
Bond resolution.
Core Phase Two B, bond resolution, eleven dash twenty-four.
Uh, this is the bond resolution to allow the mayor and myself to continue on with a bond for the core phase two, up to four million dollars.
Any questions? I'll look for a motion.
I'd move to approve.
Motion second to approve the core Phase Two B bond resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. And we've got River Park Development, uh, preliminary plans.
Just a, just a review for council on the development process, is that uh developers start with that concept plan, so that was before you last month or a couple months ago, um, just for informational purposes. Um, then they go into the preliminary plans, which is this step, they did go in front of planning and zoning this last week, uh, they had some tweaks to the zoning, uh, that was revised and put in the packet for your approval. Um, the next step, once this is approved, then they go into the development engineering plans, and then that's approved by city staff. And so what they'll do is, the next step for them in front of you would be the annexation process, and they'll work on a minor plat, and then put that application together, so make sure that you agree with the zoning portion of the preliminary plans for sure.
Questions?
Just Brian Jackson, Van Baskirk Companies, just here in case you have any questions.
Um, we did have a lengthy discussion about this at P and Z, I do thank Mr. Jackson and Van Baskirk, they did make some tweaks uh to the preliminary plan based on what the Planning and Zoning Commission was discussing, so um I think they're pretty satisfied with what's in front of you.
It's a due pass?
Yeah, if you look at page one forty-two, it outlines the, what will be the requested zoning of the development, it's a mixed-use zone, including R-three multiple-family and general business along Holly, downs, or down zoning to R-two, and then eventually down to the, the R-one single-family homes, and then you've got some, some NRC, uh, the, the institutionals, or not NRC, institutional, the green institutional on the southeast side is the barn property. The green institutional on the southeast side is the barn property that we just talked about. Um, otherwise, you know, the preliminary plans are just kinda the next, a little more detailed than the concept plan shows. Some, some areas or places for water mains and sewer mains and stuff like that, the staff looks at. Um, but then the, the really detailed stuff is for the engineering and public works department and the design engineering plans.
So Tim, what did, what did, um, P and Z suggest to be changed? I would, I missed that.
So, he, originally, the plan was drawn with much more R-two in it, and they have, uh, switched some stuff back to R-one. So R-two, um, you know, the, the difference between the zoning districts is lot sizes, it's, it's lot setbacks, um, you know, certain things that go into different zoning categories. So, um, the R-one is just a nicer zone for, uh, bigger, single-family homes. The R-two will be a lot of like villa-style homes, uh, smaller. Um, so, yeah, they, they. Yep, and, and so they, all the lots that were, that could fit in the R-one category, they switched to being R-one instead of having them in R-two. So, yes.
Good. Do we need a motion to approve this plan?
Correct.
A second.
Motion, a second to approve the preliminary plan for River, uh, River Park Development.
While, while I have, uh, Brian up here, just a couple of questions. Um, one would be, uh, I know a big thing for us is trying to get the, the quote, Bluffs area transitioned into Br- into Brandon a little bit more. Any of this plan, um, bike pathways to try to connect us, connect them to?
Right, I, I would defer to Tammy, what page is the shared use plan? There's one in, that, that shows what, how that will work. Um, do you know what page it is? So, yeah, as you're looking that up, we've had, um, I would say generally extensive conversations with Tammy. Um, the, our, our engineer and, and I came over and, and sat down with Tammy and Patrick and kinda went over the shared use paths and how to, how to make that work. Um, especially in tying into where the path that comes off of Van Busker Park kinda stops about halfway through Eagle Creek. So there'll be, uh, we've talked about how to tie that in and continue along the creek, also coming in along creekside there, um, with that. So, and eventually, at some point down the road, we will have Burton Drive from the Bluffs connect through to, uh, River Park. Um, there's a lot of, uh, topography issues over there, and we're not quite there yet, so as, as we build out from Holly to the south, we'll eventually hit that one a little bit harder. But I would anticipate that five to seven years probably before we would see something like that happen.
My second quick question is, is just, um, I know there's still a lot of steps taken, but how, for you guys, ideally, when would you like to start breaking some ground out there?
March, April? Yeah, no, we, we have some, um, retailers that are, were in some final stages of negotiation and working out some different things that, um, will provide. It, it'll be a great infill for that area. Um, they're all kind of hinging upon each other, so, um, I think this is one good step there. There's a couple of other things that I'll, in, in discussions with Tammy and Patrick on that we're close to getting figured out. So, if that was the case, and that all comes to fruition, we need to provide billable, uh, sites by August first. So, and then there's, there's additional, it, it's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts, so we'll have our work cut out for us, for sure. It's very aggressive.
Looks good.
Bri- Brian, can I just ask, uh, um, what is track nine allocated for? Is that gonna be multi-family?
Track nine, that long one on the south side? So, possibly, it's, as, as they kinda said, and going, going back into the discussion with, that Tim had said about as far as P and Z goes, is, um, yeah, you know, density was kinda the big thing with it. And, and eventually, we were, what we ended up doing is we were gonna come through with our zoning, so I, I guess to clarify what Tammy said earlier, we've already annexed this in, so we'll do the preliminary plats to actually do the zoning. We were, we were most likely gonna come in and change everything that's on this map now to R-one. It was specifically, our intent was just lot size, 'cause our, our, as we're trying to transition from business to some workforce housing type things, that's where you see the fifty-foot lots coming in. And then we're, we're working with a builder that has a product that'll fit on fifty-feet lots, we have a builder that, the same builder that has sixty-five-foot wide lot products, and then your traditional R-one. So, we're trying to work with your R-one ordinance that only says minimum eighty-foot wide lot. That's not a lot of flexibility, so that's, that's where the discussion came from with that. On that street, I would imagine it would be townhomes or twin homes of some sort, so, yes. Long answer of, yes, multi-family, but medium, medium to low-density, multi-family.
Sure. Then on track eleven, um, thank you for, you know, being willing to leave the barn there if possible, right? Um, are there any other plans to do, any other like park-type environment in there, community park-type?
In that specific track with the two acres?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I would say that's part of what the discussion is when we met with the Game Fish and Parks and the Historical Society in the city, is to specifically identify what it could be used for. Um, I, I guess I got on my soapbox at that meeting and said, I, I, I envisioned that as a community area where you could do some arts in the park. Um, you could have, you know, I, I think about, you know, downtown Sioux Falls by like Sharapa Place, the national topography there going down from the barn is just, you know, it's angled right where you could put a band closer to the park and then people could sit up. So anybody could come in, you know, you could have the Game Fish and Parks or the city or whoever you wanna work at, could actually terrace it out and, that, I, I envision, you know, have food trucks, ice cream trucks, you know, things like that in the summer. The whole intent of what we're trying to do with this area is create daytime activity, daytime use, and also evening use. You know, with, with being a, you know, you guys aren't gonna like this, but a bedroom community of Sioux Falls, a majority of your workforce drive somewhere to go to work, and then they come home at night. And that, you know, and you're seeing that here with, as you're trying to get restaurants and additional businesses and things, is, you know, there's no lunch crowd, or it's a limited lunch crowd, things like that. We're trying to figure out how to make this work with either the retailers that are there, we've gone to the Development Foundation and talked about possibility of incubator office space. Just something so that it's a continually used area, so that you'd have your daytime business-type folks utilizing that space, and then they would transition out, and then the residents would move in and utilize that type of space, so. Big dreams, little budget.
I think it's, it's, it's a great investment.
Yeah, so we'll definitely look forward to working with everybody, everybody's been great. Like I said, if we can get, uh, the structural, um, component back and, and get a better identify what can be done with that. Um, I think from there, that's when you'll really see some traction gain off of it. But as far as, as, uh, my employer, yeah, they're, they're committed with this, you know, there's some seed money that goes into, that they're involved with it. And, and, um, yeah, we wanna see this, like, like, like you're saying, uh, Colin, is the Bluffs in that area town has always been disconnected from the city itself. And with this infill that we wanna do, we're hoping that we can kinda make it feel a little bit more contiguous, even though there's a river there, there's always gonna be that geographical aspect of it all. But, um, you know, there's been some additional conversations with the Game Fish and Parks, is how can you get people from the concrete path on the east side of the Big Sioux Rec area over to that area? You're dealing with floodplain and thick brush and everything, so, you know, or, or how, you know, could they move a trail from like the dog park parking area so that people could walk and stroll down that way? So, lots of ideas, we'll know more as we continue on, so thank you for your support with it though.
Great investment, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Streets, we got the work report on one fifty-four. Um, sprinkler damage right of way on one fifty-five and one fifty-six. Brian.
We, we received a request that, um, apparently we damaged a couple of sprinkler heads on a, on a property during snow removal activities. Wanted to know if the city would reimburse the property owner for the damage and/or the cost to repair. Historically, we have not, um, reimbursed for damage to sprinklers. We do reimburse up to seventy dollars for, uh, damage to mailboxes that are damaged during snow removal activities. But we haven't for sprinklers, A, they're within the right-of-way, which is city-owned property. We don't, um, we had no input as to the sprinklers going in or where they were located. If you don't want the sprinklers damaged, the best place to put them is up next to the sidewalk and not the curb. So, we don't get a lot of sprinkler damage every year, it's, it's, it's not a huge number. But I don't think it's appropriate for the city to reimburse for property damage to our property.
I would just add that with the mailbox, the federal government controls where the mailboxes are gonna be put, so we don't have a choice but to put them in the right-of-way, um, to allow them in the right-of-way. So, there is a little difference there, 'cause that's very regulated. We could regulate if you really wanted where the sprinkler heads go, 'cause they're in the right-of-way, but we've let property owners make that decision, subject to, if they get damaged, it's their responsibility.
Is, is there anybody here to speak to this? 'Cause I, I did invite, um, Chris to come, I don't think, as far as I know, he's not here. I think that, I'm glad Jill's here, I thi- I think this is a good, um, informational thing for residents. I think a lot of people don't realize that the city owns the right-of-way, even though they are asked to take care of it, that's just a part of being in a city. And maybe the placement of the sprinkler heads, if someone is, you know, building a new house, yeah, put them by the sidewalk. I'm assuming this sprinkler head must've been popped up if it got damaged, otherwise I would think it would've, they would've just slid right over.
Think so? Yeah, but. But the sprinkler head should've been below the curb.
Yeah.
So, even if the blade tipped, it should've rode over the sprinkler head.
Right. I mean, our other, our other option is not to plow so close to the curb, right? I don't know that we want that.
That's, that's.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I understand Chris's, uh, frustration, but I, I, I don't, I think we're just gonna have to pat, personally, I'm just gonna have to pass on that one.
Yeah, staff's recommendation is that we continue our current policy of not reimbursing for sprinkler damage due to snow removal activities.
Is that something you need a motion on right now?
No, no.
Okay. Uh, core Phase two B testing with Geotech. I guess we're gonna have to do that.
Yep, we're gearing up for construction season, so this is just the material testing from Geotech, so we can do the core, um, area Phase two B project.
I'll look for motion.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve. Any further discussion? Here, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. And Water and Sewer Water Treatment Plant, uh, pay application. Page one fifty-nine to one seventy-eight.
And just to note, we're right at that fifty percent mark, so they're still on schedule for getting this done in early twenty-twenty-five.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve the, uh, pay application for the water treatment plant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We don't have any other, uh, new business, so we will go into executive session.
Track a motion to discuss litigation.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, a second to discuss some litigation in executive session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.